I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll please remain standing for a brief moment silence. Thank you. Vanessa, please call and roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel here.
Commissioner Vogel.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Real officer reports and comments. We have no rose with us today. Public comments. Do we have any member of the public who should make comment? Okay, fiscal and contractual. We have no repository properties, no advertising business proposals, no receipt of business proposals. We do have one warrant register dated January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. I'll give my colleagues a minute to check that over and then I'll take a motion to accept and file the warrant register.
Salute.
Second. You have issued a second for discussion here and none question on the motion. All in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same signed motion carries. Minutes from Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over and take a motion to approve the minutes. I'm gonna vote on them because I'm just gonna vote on them, but I believe that I wasn't here last week. I was attending an operation.
Salute.
Second. Motion is seconded for discussion here and none question on the motion. All in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same signed motion carries. We have two presentations of written communications, both in Union Township. One relates to AMG titanium alloys and coatings LLC state only operating renewal permit. And one is a pen power of the face of plain transmission line work on Old Youngstown Road. Unless anyone has any questions or comments on those, I'll take a motion to accept and file.
Salute.
The reason, I apologize. The only reason I'm hesitating, I don't recall seeing the second, but my name's on there, so obviously it was forwarded to me. So just bear with me one second. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion is seconded for further discussion. Hearing none. Question on the motion. Sorry, it's got to be asking. All in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same signed motion carries. Staff reports. Any member of staff want to say anything to report about me? I'm sorry, go ahead. Seeing none. Commissioner reports and comments. I'm on deck first today. I do have some comments relating to broadband, but I figure it's probably more appropriate to wait until we approve our first, our first hard ground allocations to include, kind of pack them into the official broadband allocation located there.
Yes.
Loretta.
Um, I will just say since yes, I wanted to start the meeting ahead of time that I will be meeting this afternoon for C cap for our annual, our first of the year board meeting that we have and also that we will be at the Capitol, um, meeting with legislators and also announcing our legislative priorities through C cap. So I will be on the road later this afternoon.
Same travels to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dan.
No, I, I have nothing today. Thank you.
All right. Al, you picked a good one to attend. You were moving fast.
I think about that.
New resolutions. First and foremost, we have our Public Safety Director Chad Struble, Revolution, editor with Thomas Shelby and Company. Chad, what do we have going on here? We'll make this resolution twenty twenty-three dash.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
All right, um, we have two options. Currently, we have seven chairs of dispatch. There are, any chair would be quite expensive. Our twenty-four hour chairs are built a little bit heavier. So our two options are one to go with this Thomas Shelby company. As the warranty expires, we're gonna start paying all the prices for repairs of the current chairs we have. Just an idea, the gas cylinders were raised on about four hundred apiece. The armrests are about three hundred apiece. So one option is to go with Thomas Shelby, be at least for three chairs, fully warranted. Anything happens to them, they send us a new chair. We send the old one back. They come in every year and swap out the chairs, give us two similar condition rebuilt newer chairs or three newer chairs to use each year. And over three years, approximately ten thousand dollars. Price, ten thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars. Our second option would be to start now replacing the current chairs we have, which are the iron horse chairs. The last price we got last year was nineteen hundred apiece at the state contract government rate. With an increase probably to two thousand, twenty-two hundred dollars apiece to start replacing them in a sequence. Those are couple of the five-year warranty on the suspension parts, the gas cylinder, the wheels, the base. A three-year warranty on some of the heavier wear parts, armrests, seat pads and padding on the back. Then no warranty on that upholstery or anything else. There's two options. I'm open either way. This contract, three-year contract with Thomas Shelby, which is for three chairs for ten thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars. Or we could start to replace with the iron horse chairs a couple of years. So we're not faced with this same thing in five years when we replace all of them or start replacing all of them.
Do you, I mean, I have a Shelby resolution in front of me. Do you have a preference?
Uh, I do not, no. It's, you know, either one will work for us.
How many chairs that, do how many of the iron horse need replaced? You said it's called two grand a pop.
Right now, um, all of them are out of warranty, so we're gonna be fronting, or we're gonna be taking the cost for repairs on all of them.
Okay.
Um, actually, a couple of them expire in a few months.
So it'd be more costly to go with that option relative to the Shelby option?
Correct, yeah.
I'm gonna.
Pay it piece by piece.
If you're indifferent, I'll give you what's cheapest.
Yeah, okay.
Any other, any questions or comments for the director?
No, I'm fine.
You, you know what you need, so that's good.
Appreciate it.
All right, we'll make this twenty-nine. I'll take a motion approved.
Salute.
Second. Motion is seconded for discussion here and none question on the motion. Vanessa, please call and roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll note nine-one-one is covered out of telecommunications funds passed through my state. Okay, well, I'll have a seat.
Thank you. All right. Yes, thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not, if I hear anything, I'll swap the order.
Thanks for those updates. Yes, absolutely.
Up next, thirty, we are approving the CBA with Lawrence County Detective Association. Of the negotiations that I've taken part in, this was the most amicable through and through. Detectives got a little bit of what they wanted. We got a little bit of what we wanted, which tells you it was probably a decent negotiation. And so this approves that contract through the end of two thousand and twenty-five. I don't have a copy of contract sitting in front of me, but if my recollection serves, it's three percent, two and a half percent, two and a half percent on salary increases, cost of living increases, and a one percent increase here over a year on healthcare with a, with the same cap that we use for AFME. And there's some, I didn't miss some other provisions included in there that, that we worked out, but obviously for, for the cost of accounting, those are always the big two items.
Absolutely.
And again, I don't have, I don't remember exactly what the.
Or can I have the contract?
Oh, beautiful. Oh, yeah, if you could give me that. Thank you. I'll tell you exactly what. I'm pretty sure it's three. Two and a half, two and a half. If you give me one second. And again, there are numerous other provisions in here, but the, yeah, yep, three, two and a half, two and a half. And then.
What was their insurance to start off with, just out of curiosity there?
I would say we're, we're writing out three.
Three, okay.
Um, we're going up to, we're going up to five, six, seven, twenty-four is gonna be five. Actually, we changed that. That's just twenty twenty-four, one-one twenty twenty-four, so we'll, little scribbler's error there. But two thousand twenty-three will be five percent, two thousand twenty-four will be six percent, two thousand twenty-five will be seven percent, and that includes vision and data. Um, so they're not paying zero percent for vision and data anymore that's included in that. Um, and again, there are some caps on that to, to make sure that.
Right.
They don't see dramatic spikes. Again, there's some, actually quite a few other provisions in there. Couple have significant monetary value, others don't, but those are the two big ones. Um, with that done, we will be able to move on to the chairs. We're gonna basically present them with the same contract. There'll be some minor modifications still, but I see no reason that the sheriff and detective should deviate too much from each other in terms of, in terms of contract. Yeah, any questions or comments on the CBI? Okay, we'll make that thirty. I'll take a motion.
Salute.
Second.
Motion is seconded for discussion here and none question on the motion. Vanessa, please call and roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll note that this is our smallest union.
Why do they have five?
I think there's seven or eight now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I forget because the Tony Costa was moved out, so that's what happened.
Okay.
Um, up next, we have thirty-one. And this is our first significant allocation of restricted American Rescue Plan Act funding. It totals the total allocation to six different entities, totals one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Again, this is from the restricted allocation. And we are required by federal law to appropriate this funding by the end of next year and extend it by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. So I'll go through each individual project. And if, if, if you want to add something at the end of each, each project, I'll, I'll open up. Just wanna get a little discrepancy. Um, first and foremost, we're awarding Lawrence County Community Action Partnership two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars for our Human Services Family Preservation Program. Uh, this is a program, a novel program that we're working on building out a through mill campus right now on the old YDC. And the purpose of the program is to provide the county with housing options for at-risk families, for temporary housing. Specifically those families who might otherwise uh, be separated as, as part of the CYS activities. This provides us an option to keep families together. It also is estimated to significantly reduce the costs at CYS. Because well, the total program cost, once again, this is capital, this is the capital funding to start program up. Um, the total program cost on an annualized basis is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run the program. Um, if we're able to divert three or four CYS plays that's annually, it more than pays for itself. Um, and so we're anticipating, uh, you know, an upfront capital investment of no money from the general fund. And so all the money for the capital investment is coming from either the American Rescue Plan, state funds, or the last tranche will come from either American Rescue Plan or OPIF fund. We haven't determined that yet. And a hundred and fifty thousand, the majority of that will also come from the state, eighty percent of it to be specific. Um, and so again, we're, we're anticipating this program, uh, will not only provide a critical gap service for our residents, um, but also save a significant amount of tax dollars as we work to divert kids away from placement and away from family separation um, and try to keep more families together. So I will turn it over to my colleagues if either one of them has any comments on that program.
Yeah.
Loretta, I know you usually are a point on human service. I, I'm not very good at explaining it.
It's, no, you did it. You did very well. No, it's, it's definitely going to be a, a cost savings with the ultimate goal being keeping families unified, keeping families together as opposed to removing children from their home environment. Yes.
Okay, up next, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Westminster College to allow them to expand their nursing program specifically with a high fidelity nursing simulation lab. Um, this will enable Westminster College to train more nurses and enhance the training offerings they provide to their nurses. It'll allow for a greater level of training for those nurses who we anticipate will go to local hospitals for employment, whether that's UPMC Jameson or UPMC Verizon uh, or other local doctors offices. Uh, and so we're allocating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Westminster for that. Any comments from my colleagues? Uh, Mahoning Township, we are allocating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to for sewage plant capital improvements. The Mahoning Township Sewage Plant has been a saga.
Really?
A saga. You know, there, there is a prime tract of land out in Mahoning Township. The, the county, township development partners have attempted to develop now on numerous occasions. Um, and every time that the county or development partners bond to Mahoning Township, Mahoning Township has answered the call. Um, they have done everything asked of them from building out a significant, a large sewage operation. Um, they've been very amicable to tax increment financing where necessary, to alert where necessary to attract land to that development. They've done everything right. And they have not seen results in that, you know, in that, uh, uh, developable area through no fault of their own. We've tried on numerous occasions to get that developed. The sewage plant is far too big for what it was, what, what, what's currently being utilized, um, which in turn causes significant problems with sewage processing. And so we're, we're allocating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our Restricted American Rescue Plan Act funding um, to right a wrong that, that Mahoning Township's been experiencing now for the better part of, I don't know when that plan came online. It's been at least eight years.
At least. Okay.
Um.
But it was maybe a bit longer.
I think it was longer too, but let's say it. Any questions, comments, anybody on that? Uh, Michael Baker, we've already outlined this, but this is just to reemphasize and formally approve, uh, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for a broadband development plan. Uh, I'll note that yesterday, um, the Board of Commissioners, um, Joe Canasco, Andy McKinney, Alan Miller met with representatives from Michael Baker for our, our first broadband executive committee meeting. I think that's what we decided to call that gathering yesterday. Uh, it was a, a, I thought a really positive meeting. Uh, we'll be looking to put together an advisory board with local community leaders. Al's been volunteer, Al volunteered for it if, if you'd be willing to accept. We just saw Chad on the Public Safety side have been volunteered for it. Uh, or, or, or maybe, maybe more so than you voluntold for it.
I was, I, I, I was a little bit of a volun-toldy.
Uh, so we'll be putting that group together shortly. Uh, they're also planning on hosting a number of pop-up meetings for community residents to come in. Uh, we'll be putting forward a survey where residents can submit areas of a problem, where areas might need enhanced broadband coverage. Uh, so if the process has started, I'm, I'm really looking forward to diving into it. Um, we set up bi-weekly status updates with Director McKinney's office, with our planning department. Uh, but this formally allocates that broadband deployment funding for the plan. I'll also note that, that Jeremy Jurick, who is the, uh, uh, National Director of Broadband Services for Michael Baker, he was here yesterday. Um, and he noted that, um, we'll be able to get this plan finished up and in good order by the time broadband funding comes down in Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority. So we are on track to be able to tap into those funds.
And that's a good thing.
Yes.
That's definitely a good thing. And of course, like you said, we will ask the community that there will be a lot of opportunities for community involvement, for you to have your voice heard. Um, we don't know all of the areas at this point in time where there is limited service or no service. So that is why this process is happening, to make sure that we have the best maps available. Um, we have done the best research that we can do to put us in line when that funding does come down because it is coming. And we do want to be in the best possible position that we can be in to, to get the monies that we need to make all of Lawrence County accessible. Yes.
Absolutely. Uh, I'll also note, because I think this is a critical tone of it, the, the project, the program of work does include two early action projects.
Yes.
Where the goal is to bring two hundred and fifty to five hundred, uh, properties online with high-speed broadband access by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. So it's not just a, a plan and an action to happen later. It's a plan that specifically includes action items.
Yes. Yes.
Um, up next, we have sixty thousand dollars being awarded to the New Wilmington Economic Development Corporation for a New Wilmington Borough Fassad Improvement Plan. Um, Mayor Bab approached the Board of Commissioners, um, I don't wanna say a name, two, three months ago um, with this request for American Rescue Plan funding. Edcom, which is just the short for Economic Development Corporation up in New Wilmington, has done a tremendous job of raising funding for this facade improvement program. Uh, I wanna say, i- 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 I'm forgetting one of the entities who donated. Um, please, please, uh, chime in. Uh, sixty thousand dollars from the Preston family, uh, sixty thousand dollars from Westminster College, sixty thousand dollars from New Wilmington Borough, now sixty thousand dollars from Lawrence County.
Right.
And then they've raised additional dollars through other sources. Uh, I know Lindy Paving gave some money. I know some private donors additionally gave some money. And so they've built out a real nice capital stack, um, to go in and make some significant facade improvements, um, to the borough, which we so desperately need it. And, uh, we're, we're certainly happy to help with that endeavor. Questions, comments? Um, Elwood City Borough, um, Elwood City Borough Fassad Improvement Program, we're giving twenty-five thousand dollars to. And the reason for the differential in money is they're two different programs. So New Wilmington, uh, has raised the, all of their funding through non-state related sources, um, through donations of private individuals, um, institutions, governments, et cetera. Um, Elwood City has raised their money through a state allocation, so we're covering half the cost of the local match, um, for that state, uh, state allocation. Um, so in other words, we're putting in twenty-five thousand, Elwood City's putting in twenty-five thousand, and then the state has already agreed and has already approved a match of fifty thousand. So total funding of a hundred thousand dollars. I believe the way the program structured the businesses will then have to contribute fifty percent. So the total capital stack for Elwood's facade improvements is two hundred thousand dollars. Um, New Wilmington's raised a little bit more money, um, but again, most of that, all of it comes from into non-state actors. Questions, comments on the Elwood City program? And the last, this is sort of an internal one, is to the Lawrence County Department of Information Technology for cyber security improvements, uh, eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, you know, one of the things that, that, one of the areas of the operation that we've put priority on over the last couple of years is shoring up our cyber security defenses. Um, and so this, this adds to those efforts. Uh, you know, we, we don't want a scenario where a hacker comes in and shuts down election systems two days before an election um, and then forces us to pay a significant ransom in order to bring those systems back online. Uh, you know, we don't want a scenario like what we've seen in, in other counties, other cities. Luzerne County, I think, had a cyber attack. Atlanta had a major cyber attack. And so this, this continues to improve our, our cyber security efforts, um, here at the county uh, to make sure that, that our systems are secure, our residents' data is secure, and the county is able to function. So those are our, our six projects that we have for this first tranche of ARPA funding. Looking forward to releasing, uh, future tranches soon. And certainly glad that, 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 uh, we're able to deploy this funding into our community where, where it belongs. So with that, any, any further questions or comments on our American Rescue Plan allocations?
I have none.
I'd just note a couple of things. COVID has changed so much for everybody, including county government. And you may recall that, uh, under the prior federal administration, we received what were known as CARES dollars. And they had some restrictions to them, and they also had, uh, very strict deadlines. We had to get that money out in a very short period of time. The current administration implemented this program, the ARPA program. And fortunately, they do allow a little more flexibility and, and a good deal more time, as Commissioner Boyd noted. We have until the end of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, to determine the use of these dollars. And, and the actual rollout can even go as far as two thousand and twenty-six. That's helpful. Uh, you never know what might arise a year from now. And, and I think it's, I think it's important that we be prudent to make sure that there's still money in the pot a year from now in case matters arise that we might need to address. The other thing I'll note, um, we've worked very closely with our auditing firm. Uh, they have folks on their staff who have studied the rules and regulations very, very carefully. And anytime we have a, an ARPA question as to what can we do, what can we not do, what is eligible, what is not eligible, we run it past them. And, uh, they make sure that what we're doing is in fact in accord with the rules and regulations. So I can assure everybody that everything that was just noted here has been given a stamp of approval by our auditors as well, and they have legal folks on their staff as well. So, uh, we've, uh, we've met the guidelines. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point.
I will take a motion approved thirty-one.
Salute.
Second. Motion is seconded for further discussion here and none question on the motion. Vanessa, please call and roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, up next, this is a big money meeting today. Up next, we.
Which is a good thing. Which is a, a very good thing.
And none of it's coming from the general.
Right.
Not a dollar. We haven't spent a dollar so far out of the general fund. Um, and we've spent one point, however many millions, and we're about to spend another eight hundred thousand, again, not out of the general fund. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, uh, this approves, uh, numerous, uh, transportation-related projects, allocations to our municipalities for transportation-related projects in total. This, uh, this resolution approves thirty-eight paving projects, three culvert replacements, one stormwater reclamation project, and five capital purchases, uh, in sixteen of our municipalities. And, uh, you can see, um, breakdown both on the resolution and I pulled together just a basic press release. This is good. And so the, the funding for this comes, four hundred thousand dollars is coming from our, our state liquid fuels allocation. And then four hundred thousand dollars is coming from our vehicle registration fee fund. Uh, in effect, this actually drains the vehicle registration fee fund. Um, as we, uh, stated when we initially approved that fund, all monies will be going to municipal transportation projects. And so far, all monies have gone to municipal transportation projects. Um, actually, that fund is generating more than liquid fuels, um, significantly more. And so again, we're, we're, we're certainly glad to be in a position to fund our municipalities, um, to provide eight hundred thousand dollars in paving and transportation-related, uh, grants. Um, and I'll note that in total, this eight hundred thousand um, allows for three million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and nine cents uh, in total county-wide transportation investment. So, you know, again, you know, our residents, over and over, and we, we hear whenever we go out in public, um, you know, pave the road. I heard it the other day. I was, I was at, uh, out in a restaurant the other night. And somebody come up to me and say, what are you guys doing about the roads? And.
This is your answer.
And this, this is the, and I always preface it by saying, I know that Dan's gonna reiterate this as soon as I'm done talking. Uh, I, I always preface it by saying, uh, the county does not own any roads.
No.
We own twenty-seven bridges, um, and we maintain each of those bridges, um, at a high level of maintenance.
Yes.
All of our bridges are in good shape right now. Our engineers, uh, have, have relayed that, that much to us. Um, and the county does not own any roads.
Yeah.
And so we're appropriating this money to the municipalities to help them cover their road costs. But again, I'll note that, that, uh, if you have a problem with your roads, you don't come, don't come to us. You gotta go see Al. You gotta go see, you gotta go see, uh, Baker, or Administrator Fry.
Yes, yeah.
You gotta go see Elder Vogel if it's a state road.
Sure.
Um, but no, we're certainly happy to help our municipalities.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Now I don't have to say it.
Any questions, call and.
I love when we have our Dan quotes, but because those are things, though, you make that, that easier for us. I can remember first coming in saying, we own no roads, no roads, but there's twenty-seven municipalities and we own twenty-seven bridges. I remember those two together.
I actually, I actually, whenever I was the person approached me at the restaurant, I actually said, look, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull a Vogel on you. I'm gonna explain how it works.
That's it. I missed the trivia. That, that is it. I missed the trivia.
The two-dollar, the two-dollar bill, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We'll resurrect that segment.
All right. It's, it's time, yeah, time for trivia.
Any questions, again, questions, comments on this?
Happy to do what, what we can do to assist the municipalities, um, with, with getting their roads fixed up. It, I know it's always, it's a very costly proposition. And I know that there's always, there's always a road or two or three or four or ten that, that need repaired for a variety of different reasons. So we're happy to help them, and they, just as a note, they propose the projects to us. They submit their, their plans to us, and through our process, they get approved, and then we, um, we delegate the money to them from the two funds that were, that were mentioned.
And that's actually critical too. Every municipality that applied for funding is receiving at least one grant.
Yes, yes. Yes, yeah, at least one, yes.
Um, and so what we did, the process, we, we allowed for up to two applications. Um, and whichever application a municipality submitted first, we went through all of those, appropriated that or allocated that funding.
Yes.
And then we went back in the second application, depending on when those applications were submitted, uh, we worked our way through the second round of funding until we ran out of funding.
Yes.
And so, uh, this year, although we actually had more in requests than what we had to allocate.
Yes.
Uh, last year, we had more to allocate than we had in requests. And so I'm glad that this program is, is catching on.
Yes. Yes.
I, I think it's worth noting too that, uh, a couple of things. We have, we do, as Loretta noted, we have twenty-seven municipalities, although SNPJ only.
Although SNPJ only has, the borough has one road, public road going through its boundaries. And I believe North Beaver Township maintains that road, I'm almost certain of that. So excluding SNPJ Borough, we'll say there are twenty-six municipalities that would have been eligible for this. Curiously, ten of them did not apply.
Right.
As, as Mr. Boyd noted, this affects sixteen municipalities throughout the county. But there were ten from whom we did not hear. And maybe next year, if we're able to replicate this, they'll, they'll be able to submit it. I mean, we did establish a deadline, we, I think we gave them about six weeks, roughly.
I see, longer than that, I agree, Amy said to notice when I'm in luck too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so they had, and it grew until what, December thirty-one?
Much longer period of time.
Yes.
I stand corrected.
Yes, yes.
We gave them quite a bit of time. Since you asked for trivia, I, the other, the other day, I was, I was researching something and this goes back to the mid nineteen-sixties, the Newcastle News. And there was a small article about the county commissioners implementing a liquid fuel distribution to a couple of townships in the county. So what we're doing is certainly not new. I mean, for decades, the county has been doing this. During my tenure, there have been many years when we've been able to do it. There have been some years when the needs of our county bridges have taken up so much money that we've not been able to do this. But this is, this is a good year for us. So, but boy, I certainly hope that during the next go-around that we'll hear from all twenty-six. Thank you.
Absolutely. And this is, this is the single largest general allocation of county transportation funding that's been made to municipalities in Lawrence County history. Of course, just, you know, I'll get certainly-
We'll have to be part of that.
Certainly a part of it.
Yes, absolutely.
So I'll take a motion to approve.
Send it.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion here and none? Question on the motion? Van Assis, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thirty-three, this is clarical, this just sets the IRS mileage rate. I didn't, did you have any more of a, any more explanation for that? Actually, this, this is nice because when we're having to offset the rate, it'll just automatically change when the IRS changes the rate.
And that's a good thing, yeah.
So thirty-three, I'll take a motion.
Send it.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion here and none? Question on the motion? Van Assis, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This is our savin program, thirty-four, which we do every year. Every year, every other year, I think, is the grant run through. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, this relates to victim services. The SAV, because I remember, I think I remember Kate Fee Bar come in last time.
I think you're right.
Yes.
You're right.
Yes.
Yeah, right there, the victim identification as well, provided additional services to county residents. And so all we're doing is renewing this grant for, for the duration of two thousand and twenty-three. Questions, comments? I'll take a motion.
Send it. No, no, I'll second. And, and, yeah, and of course, Kate, Kate retired and I always looked forward, you're right, she would come here every year. And she was very passionate about this program. Does anybody know who this is?
I do, in my mind, just went blank, oh my gosh.
Oh, Chrissy Mungar, in the DA's office.
No, 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 DA's office. No, this is the attorney, the assistant DA.
Oh, it's just, it's, it's not Emily, is it? No, is it Tyler? No, it's Deanna.
Thank you.
Okay, good, good, okay, thank you.
I could see her face right in front, and I could not, could not think of her name, thank you.
Deanna, don't do this.
I knew who it wasn't.
There's nothing.
I guess in honor of Kate Fee Bear, I'll second.
Sounds good. All right, we have motion to the second. Any further discussion or not, question on the motion? Van Assis, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have a budget amendment. What this does is this allocates the interest revenue coming off of one of our accounts to a couple of different points in the county budget. That zero should be wa, wa, that third zero.
Thank you.
Yep. So yeah, wa, off that, it should be forty-three, the revenue should be forty-three thousand, thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, but not a, not that extra zero.
That's all.
A little scrip in there, there. So yeah, that's all that's doing. Question on, any questions on that? I'll take a motion.
Send it.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion here and none? Question on the motion? Van Assis, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thirty-six. This is the budget amendment for the ARPA allocations that we just approved. That's, so we first approved the application, saying we're going to spend the money on this. What this does is this moves the money around in the budget to allow the controller's office to extend it. Questions, comments on that? That'll be thirty-six. All right, good motion.
Send it.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion here and none? Question on the motion? Van Assis, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This reads thirty-eight, it should be thirty-seven, I believe, unless I scrolled something up somewhere.
No. Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. And again, this, this is providing for, removing some money, we've got to pay for our, our access bill. Originally, I was planning on leaving my contingent down to the mines to clear out some of that space. We're still planning on doing that, we just can't do it with busload of staff. We have to do it sort of one department at a time. And so we're, we're working on organizing that. But until such time as we do that, we have to pay the access bill.
Right.
Although one of the easiest ways maybe to get rid of all those files is not pay the access bill.
They'll threaten us, right?
Yeah. Absolutely, I get to the doctor, yeah. Might be the easiest way to skin that cat. But I'll take a resolution on thirty-seven, or a motion on thirty-seven.
Send it.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion here and none? Question on the motion? All in favor, or Van Assis, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have some administrative transfers. This is just for the record how kicking we are with the money. This is an eight-dollar transfer. This is an eight-dollar transfer, moving from a human resources contingency account to association dues due to a small increase, an eight-dollar increase in the amount of association dues for, I assume, a share.
Could have taken up a collection, one buck for each of us and all thrown in two bucks and we'd have covered it.
Motor Services Contingency, this is funds for UPS battery backup and monitors, moving it from their contingency into their security and training. And I believe this is through the, our grant. I don't think, I don't believe this is a general.
That was going to be my question and I hope you're right.
Because, yeah, we don't have to line it up in the normal budget, security and transportation, that, that's a grant.
That's good.
CCAP dues increased over what was budgeted by about six thousand dollars. So we're moving some money from Commissioner Contingency into association dues.
You can blame Loretta and me for that.
Yes.
Blowing the budget up on the board.
I know, I know.
Blowing the budget up. No, I'm going to be happy to, happy to do it. All right, I will take a motion for administrative transfers, those administrative transfers.
Send it.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion here and none? Question on the motion, in favor, please, if I'm saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next commissioners' meeting will be held on Tuesday, January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, at ten AM in the commissioners' meeting room. I believe that's about it in terms of announcements. Lucy, do you have anything?
I don't think there's anything else, I mean.
I neglected something during, during the commissioner reports. I forgot to note that last Friday, I was very honored to attend the installation ceremony for Chief Justice Deborah Todd. Ceremony was held in Pittsburgh. Were about six hundred people at the William Penn Hotel Ballroom. And there were a good number of folks from Elwood City, which of course is her hometown. There were a number of attorneys from Lawrence County there. Judge Motto, along with, there had to be at least a hundred and fifty judges, all in their black robes, who all sat together. Judge Motto and District Judge Cartwright were both in attendance. The governor was there, the lieutenant governor was there, former Governor Corbett was there. It was a very, very good day for Justice Todd and a good day for Lawrence County. Elwood City was noted throughout the program. Program ran about two hours, there were a lot of speakers. But a lot of them made reference to the fact that she grew up in Elwood City, she's the daughter of a steel worker. It was just a very, very nice gathering and very honored to be part of it. So I forgot to mention that at the beginning.
Thank you. Thank you for representing us. And I think Judge Motto, what about you, didn't he?
No, we wrote, I got to sit next to his wife, which is always a pleasure.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I didn't make it, I worked in, I really feel bad about that, yeah.
I went to Florida, I offered out. Thank you. Thank you. Public comments, any additional comments from public? Seeing none, unless there's any further business to discuss, I will adjourn the meeting. We're going to turn a livestream off.
I have your packet, Debbie. And no eleven o'clock.
No, I, she had to go walk through somewhere.